Okay. Is everybody, everybody okay, ready to go? We're good? Okay. Okay, we're gonna call the Committee of Whole meeting for July 24th, 2023 to order. It is now 5:34. And we will start with roll call. Alderwoman Malone Marshall.
Present.
Alderman Prude. Alderman Barron.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Here.
Alderman Tally.
Present.
Alderman Osinga.
Present.
Alderman Cobb's. Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderwoman Noble. Alderman Jones.
Present.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Navarez.
Here.
Alderman Marzak.
Present.
Alderwoman Swanson. We do have a quorum. So next, we'll move into item three, public comments. Do we have any public comments tonight for the Committee of the Whole? Seeing none, we'll move into section four. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from April 24th, 2023? I believe these were emailed out to you in early July, I think July 6th or so. And then we just presented a copy tonight, if you want to take a moment.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I'll second.
We do have a motion from Alderman Osinga. We have a second from Alderwoman Johnson. Is there any questions, comments, additions, changes to the minutes? Seeing none, quick roll call. Alderwoman Malone Marshall.
Aye.
Alderman Barron.
Aye.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Alderman Tally.
Aye.
Alderman Osinga.
Aye.
Alderman Marzak.
Aye.
Alderman Navarez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Jones.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We do not have any presentations tonight, so we're gonna jump into old business. And that is the review of the current allocation, the amount that has been spent through June 30th of 2023 for each item that we have allocated. So you have that in front of you. We also have Comptroller Kubal here with us tonight, if there's any detailed questions. But in front of you, take a look at this. As you see, to date, we have allocated 13,324,592, and some change of allocation, leaving an amount of 1.727 million that has not been allocated. To date, expenses we have spent, just a little bit over 7 million. 7,351.41 of the 13 million allocated, leaving a unspent balance of about, just a hair under 6.3 million that has not been spent of what has been allocated. I don't know if you guys want to run through these, or if you just, if you have any questions about the status of where we're at on several of these items here. But this is a pretty good sheet to show you where we're at as of today.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Alderman Osinga.
Under gun violence prevention, we allocated 500,000. We spent 526, we're negative 26,000. Can you quickly go over to somebody what exactly we spent 500,000 on?
Yes, so when we are gonna talk about that tonight, I don't have the details with me, but I can tell you a majority of that is spent in several different areas. So we did use it for body cameras that were utilized there. We did use it, I was just talking to Chief Kidwell about this, the ShotSpotter. Last year, we did allocate, we believe we did allocate that through there. And Comptroller Kubal, does that ring a bell also for you that we did use ARPA money last year for ShotSpotter?
Mayor, I believe so.
Yeah, oh, hang on, sorry. There you go. Sorry.
Mayor, I believe so.
Okay. It has been allocated for the Flock cameras that we have throughout the city of Kankie. Chief Kidwell, how many do we currently have up right now, Flocks, about five or six? Yeah. We utilized it for a software system called Graykey. That is something that we partnered with the county on. That is a software system that allows when the police recover a cellphone from an incident, crime, or unfortunately, a death, they're able to break into that phone and get things from whatever they can find on there, whether it's from social media, from texting, or whatever, they can use that as potential evidence. They can also use it as, you know, locating where people are and different things. So that was a system called Graykey that we, the first year, we did allocate with the county on that. And I believe this year, we allocated money for it, but it was split up by all the agencies in Kankie County, not just us in the county. But the city probably uses a majority of the time along with the county. And then a great majority of that is on top of that. So that's, I'm just running through that, that's probably pushing a couple hundred thousand dollars if you do Graykey, body cameras, Flocks, some other things, maybe not quite that, 200 above 150, go ahead.
And there has been a small amount of salaries taken out of that as well, to the tune of about 51,000.
For, I'm sorry?
Salaries.
Oh, okay, yes. And then also, a lot of that has been used for the Ricotta camera systems. Currently, we have, I believe, about, if you count the Flocks in there, we have about 80 cameras throughout the city of Kankie with the Flocks. But that has, Chief Kidwell, you said, every time we set up a camera system, we usually have a couple cameras pointing two different directions. It has a kit that's mounted on it. It has a cellular service. If we don't have internet service, we have to use a SIM card from Verizon to upload that information. But you said it's approximately $6,000 to set one of those systems up from start to finish? Okay. That's using our own electricians, Kyle and Eric, to mount those. But that's getting the cradle box, the SIM cards, the cameras, and all that put together there, and then Wade tests them. So that is the money that a majority has gone to. If you would like a detailed breakdown on that, the Comptroller's office does have that.
No, no, I don't.
They can detail it down to the penny for you.
Thank you. Money well spent, so.
Any other items that you see that we have spent money on, that we have allocated, not allocated?
Mayor.
Any other question? Alderwoman Johnson.
Um, just an example, like our lift stations, we allocated 60,000. We used 52, so we have like almost 8,000 left. Are we gonna, are they gonna use that 8,000, or are we gonna roll it back to?
I would have to ask Zach. At this point, I would say that's probably some excess amount that's left over.
Okay.
But all the pumps that were ordered for lift stations, that's what that was for. That was buying, I believe, up to seven additional pumps, I believe. Six or seven additional pumps.
Yes.
We've gotten those. And so I would say at this point, that 7,900 is probably some excess funding there, because as you know, we're, we don't do exact amounts, we kind of do some round numbers. So we probably allocated 60, hoping to get six to seven pumps, and probably still have about 8,000 remaining there.
Okay. So do we give a time limit when we roll that back into the account, or how does that?
Yeah, so that would be up, that's kind of what we're gonna talk about tonight, do we want to reallocate some of this money, shift some monies around in different person, places? Again, we have, just to refresh, I think everybody knows that we do have plenty of time. Again, we do not have to allocate this money until December of next year, '24. And we do not have to spend it till December of '26, so we still have some time. But at some point, as we see some of these numbers.
You may need some.
Better pay the bill.
I'll take that as a hint that I talk too much, so. But yes, at some point, we can do that. I think, in my opinion, a good time to maybe look at some of those things might be towards the end of this year, or maybe our first ARPA meeting in 2024, because then we'll be getting within 10 to 11 months of having to go where we're gonna allocate money to. But I don't think there's a major hurry, but, but to answer your question, I assume that's some excess left over.
Okay.
A good example, if you look, I believe, Comptroller Kubal, Francine Drive has been 100% paid, done, completed, correct?
Mayor, that is my understanding.
So if you look at Francine Drive, we allocated 1.3 million. Luckily, a lot of those water turn-ons were as covered by Aqua. So there's some significant money there, $219, $226.52 that probably needs to be reallocated at some point to somewhere else on a different line item.
Mayor.
Alderwoman Malone Marshall.
So with, like with the gun violence prevention, are we gonna allocate more money to that area? Are we thinking about that?
That's, that under new business, I'd like to talk about that and see what everybody's thoughts are tonight on that, so.
Okay.
That is, I do have underneath.
I'll see you on that.
Additional potential allocation there. And with Chief Kidwell, we'll explain some thoughts there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Jones.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. As we're talking about allocation for the Francine project, as well, like, I guess a few more that, I guess we're looking at. They're doing a bunch of roads right now, and Black Valleys. And I don't know how we would do it. But is there any way that before the season end, if we're, you know, some things did not get done, is there, can we have quote-unquote wish lists if we see something where Neil may say, hey, you know, that's gonna be an additional 20 grand or something like that? Or are we tapped out as a relation to MFT, or it has to come through MFT?
Well, that, those, those would have to come through one of three areas. This year, I have to come from MFT reserves, which we really don't want to spend reserves on right now, we want to build that up, get our bond rating up. One other thing, it cannot be, those can be used for ARPA funding. Francine was used for ARPA funding because it was related to sewer work.
Okay.
So ARPA funding has very strict requirements that you can use it for. The designation that we've been putting that through is sewer, broadband, and what was the other big three? Water, sewer, and broadband, I think were the three, those are kind of like three different areas that you could do that through, so. But to just do it on an alley just to repair it, I don't believe that's ARPA eligible.
Okay.
Can it be done in some other ways? We could talk about that at Budget Committee.
Right.
Unless somebody comes up with a creative way of how alleys fits within ARPA, so. Right now, just to kind of give you an update, it's that time of the month, Comptroller Kubal, if you see smoke coming out of the second floor of the administration building, that's just her fingers typing away to put a report that's due by the end of the month here, so. It's a very detailed report, it's very labor-intensive, and that has to be filed every quarter, so. I will say that through the audit process, the Comptroller Kubal, the auditors are very comfortable, I believe, of how we're, they probably really haven't audited it yet, but they are comfortable of how we're setting it up for the future with different sign-offs and reporting that quarterly, and it's very detailed interaction, so. And how we're doing it through this committee and City Council.
Yes, Mayor, they've been very pleased with the process, and it'll be a hot topic in, as we finish up fiscal '23's audit. This'll be the first time they really dig into it. As we start paying outside vendors, as you recall, in fiscal '22, we only paid ourselves through the ESU project and through the loss of revenue to line items. We started paying others as we were supposed to, and spread the, spread the money throughout the community in fiscal '23. So it will require some different auditing procedures as given to them from the OMB. And we will make sure that we, if we don't have an area we are in compliance with, we will certainly get there. But we feel very strongly that our process is solid. I feel great when I handed him the last packet, I had Carlos look at the last packets right here, actually. I said, I go, this is what we have to give to the government, this is what our process is, this is the resolution, this is everything. And he was very pleased. Well, I'm sure have some tweaks, but the, the heart of the process is solid.
Any additional questions regarding allocation and spent money to date? Alderman Barron.
Mayor, I have two questions, two topics, really. The first, with the 300,000 that was allocated to Kankie United, is the thought that that source of funds would cover the Office of Violence Prevention for the short-term duration before we start going to what we budgeted?
So that's what I wanted to talk to Council about tonight.
Oh.
Under new business, because I wanted to see a direction that you guys would like to partake in that. I had a thought, but I'd like to see what your guys' thoughts are, so. That is part of the, I call it Francine Drive and Kankie United allocations.
Got it.
So under new business, so we can jump in that fairly quickly, but yeah, that's part we're gonna talk, talk about.
And the, the Keys program, it looks like we've not spent the first allocation completely, but we've started spending on the second allocation?
So I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna defer to Comptroller Kubal. I have a feeling we're gonna spend every single nickel for the Keys allocation. I'm afraid we may even come over budget on that, just because this year, we hired 34 people. But Comptroller Kubal, can you address that a little bit?
Right, I, thank you, Mayor. I believe that we are going to need to tap into that first allocation to finish out possibly the second allocation because of the, I don't remember the number, is it 37, Mayor?
This year?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it was, I thought it was 32, 34, I thought.
34, okay. It's in the 30s for sure. To complete that program, I think we may need to tap into that. Also, I don't know if everything has been done with all the taxes, unemployment, and all those things we can take from that to make, make them whole. I don't know if that's all been done yet, I'd have to check with Tammy on that. I know most of that was done for last year, of course, but I don't know where we are in that process, because sometimes we wait for the quarter to end, which just ended.
And we're, you know, the Keys program will be through August 4th. I just met with Director Crowe's well today, so that's the end of the Keys program, August 4th. But I know with getting our goal last year, I think we had a 24 Keys last year, and we pushed at the 34 this year. So I, my opinion is, when this all settles down and shakes out this winter, and we look at the end of the year, and some of the things that Comptroller Kubal office will go through most of that money, if not all of it, but I could be wrong, but.
So has, has the idea been, the first allocation, that was what was spent for last year's program, and then we've started using the second allocation for this year's program?
Yes, if you remember, we had allocated, if I remember correctly, $160,000 for a two-year program. If you saw last year, we spent 140, 104, which is more than the 80. So that's where we came back for a second amount. If I look down here, where did we allocate? Another, almost 104,000.
So.
We knew it cost every bit of what it cost last year, plus additional money that was left over to cover that, so. So I, I would suspect when that's all said and done, that'll be pretty close, spot-on. I'm afraid it might even be over, but if we went over a little bit, I think that's a good thing for the kids, so.
Mayor.
Youth, I should say. Alderman Tally.
Very quickly, I'm the new kid on the block. Abbreviated version of what Keys is?
Abbreviated, that's the Summer Help Program.
Thank you.
So that is, the kids that are working, you've seen them working with DPW, you've seen them out painting the street.
Right.
You've seen them in the offices, that's, that's what we, they titled it for, the, I should note, Kankie employment.
Youth, summer.
Summer, thank you.
There you go.
I was trying to figure out what the S was, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
What about the community service officers for 400,000? Where are we at with that?
We haven't got to our full slated number of officers that were budgeted for, so we have not, we have not engaged yet. So we're budgeted for 67 sworn officers. I think we made 67 maybe twice for all of maybe a two- or three-week period, if I'm Chief Kidwell, am I off on that at all? So we're still below our budgeted amount, so we haven't even been able to engage and hire above and beyond what we're sworn in for right now, so. Where are we at, are we at 65? 64 sworn, so we're still three short, and we're hoping we got four slots in the academy. So every time it seems like we hire two or three, we have one or two retirements, and so it's always that, I don't want to say, I would say two steps forward, one step back. We're not, we're not going backwards, we moved up, but that's why we haven't spent that money yet. We would like to hire that position, but we gotta hire the 67 that we need just to do our day-to-day jobs right now. And that's just general patrol and detective work and everything else.
St. Mary's as well, they haven't spent, they haven't drawn up that?
I believe they have, we just haven't cut them the check yet. They spend every bit of it, but.
I.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't believe that they have turned in their paperwork yet, is that correct, Mayor?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, as soon as we get their paperwork, I believe Barbie was going to reach out to them, because we did, of course, pay Riverside. And as soon as we get the, the proof that we need to make the reports whole from St. Mary's, we'd be happy to send that check.
A lot of us, you look, even like the sewer lining, that's coming to a completion here very shortly, they just haven't, we haven't had all the invoicing in for that yet, so. Actually, you could even say the, you know, there's a lot, so this is as of the 30th, but in fact, even the, the camera for the sewer lining, that came in right at the end of the month, so I'm sure that will be, I think we did cut that check, but that won't show up until your next report, so it was probably after July 1st.
With the rehab of the hydroelectric plant, and we're facing three, maybe close to $3 million, are we gonna try and set aside some of that money out of this? Because that's gonna eat up pretty much everything we have. I mean, if we did that and got that fully up and running, I mean, ESU would be, you know, drawing what, at a minimum 30, 40,000 dollars a month off of, of that, I mean?
Conservatively, you could say 30,000 a month, so 240,000 a year. And if we do some of the other things, that's why I think conservatively, you could say it'd be 250,000 a year, hopefully, of additional revenue, and then maybe as much as north of 3 to 350, depending on the year.
There's nothing from Senator Joyce on any help?
Not through the spring session at this point. We did have a meeting this morning, we had a Zoom call. There is a, a state grant, it's through the federal government, that's running through the state of Illinois. It is potential help for the hydro plant. We weren't sure if it was eligible, they did do some research, and because it's providing electricity to our wastewater treatment plant, it is, it would be eligible, so we actually engaged them this morning to come up with a proposal to chase that grant. We're hoping that that could be a significant large grant, or at the very least, a very significant low-interest loan with potential forgiveness, or I don't know if we qualify for the forgiveness part, but that there. So their, the grant company did talk to the state of Illinois, and they said that our project would be eligible. Now, getting the grant and not getting is two different things, but we are going to pursue and chase that and try and help make a difference there.
I guess in regard to the, the hydro plant, are we gonna do this in stages on that? Or are they able to do, you know, like we talked about, where they were gonna get, I think, the number one generator going? Are we able to do that in stages? Because I mean, I think they're gonna retrofit the, like the computer and everything, right? So I mean, are we able to like allocate X number of dollars, let's say, a million bucks, and we get, you know, two generators going, and it could self-fund, you know, the rest of the project, but?
Right now, there's, the answer is yes and yes. So right now, this morning with the call, I actually have, I haven't even talked to Comptroller Kubal, we haven't met each other, but I have to write it down. There's a question about, are we eligible as a city? And I said, this is an accounting question or a comptroller question. If we spend money with this particular grant, and I'll get you the wording, Comptroller Kubal, it's on my desk, can we pay ourselves back?
Right.
With that grant money? Are we, are we capable, are we eligible as a city to do that? I wasn't getting an answer, and I'll let Comptroller Kubal, but that was a question. If we start spending some money on this now, can we use the grant money to pay us back, pay ourselves back? The second question was, I don't believe it would be eligible, but they're gonna look into us for it, is can you use the ARPA money to pay a low-interest loan? But that's almost like double dipping. You're getting a grant from the, you're getting a loan from the federal government using federal money. I don't think that would make some sense, but they're gonna look into it for us. There was a lot of options that were thrown out on the call today. But I did tell them that from a local level, that our representatives, senators and representatives, even at a federal level, that they're all aware of this project, and they would be very supportive of it, the help petition the state of Illinois to, to grant us that money for this project, so. They feel like because we're getting very close to shovel-ready with, you know, with the work that we've done to date, that we'd be a very, very good candidate to receive funding for this.
I had heard through a third party that you were, you were able at this point to draw interest on that money, but I did not check into that. Is that something that anybody, Elizabeth?
Interest on what money?
On, like, like, let's say our balance of, you know, X, 6 million bucks. You were able to draw interest on X number of dollars? Don't know if that's fact or fiction, but it's, it would be very interesting if that's available.
We, we, I'll let Comptroller Kubal speak to us. The only thing, we have our reserve money in an interest-bearing account, but aside from that, I'll let Comptroller Kubal.
Yeah, it's currently sitting in the escrow account, which is interest-bearing.
Cool, okay, great.
Any other questions regarding review of allocated funding to date? Okay, oh, Alderman Barron.
One more, Mayor.
Yeah.
I don't think this falls under Kankie United, but the, the Strong Neighborhoods House.
Yes.
What's our, what's our game plan there?
So there was a game plan by Jim Hand. So there was a game plan by Jim Hand, unfortunately, before he passed. There's quite a bit of work that's needed. Barbie believes she's got grant money that can cover the rough. The rough is shot, and it just, it needs to be redone. If you look at the rough, it's, we got leaks, so that can cover the rough. But then, we've also found out that the siding that's on there is not all the way up to the windows, there's some leaking coming in, some different areas there, so the, those proposals were being gathered, but now Zach has taken those over and getting some additional proposals to do some of the work for the house there. I think there's more money there than what is needed, but the goal is to basically get that house buttoned up. There was one last discussion about what do we do in the back there where the asphalt is? Do we expand that asphalt, or make something different so it can be used for events, whether it's games, whether it's basketball, whatever it is there, so... But I believe, looking at this, thirty-three hundred seems a little light of money that we spent there today with furnishings and some other things, but maybe that's right on, so... But the game plan is to get that house buttoned up tight from the weather and the elements and everything. But again, I think seventy-five's gonna be more an ample there. I think we'll have excess money there that we could utilize for other things if we need to. But I think we'll need every bit of fifty thousand when it's all said and done. The roof is, I understand, if I remember, the roof is probably, don't hold me to this, but somewhere around twelve to fourteen thousand dollars. The original bid came in, bids came in at like ten, but they weren't doing prevailing wage, so we did ask them to go out and bet at that prevailing wage. And then, the siding and everything, I gotta believe that's gonna be somewhere fifteen, so that's gonna put you up to thirty, and then there's some additional work we'd like to do within the basement itself to tighten that up also. But we're all, and that's where the signage, we'd like to get some signage and everything else there too, so that's where that would come out of. But I, again, I think seventy-five is more an ample there, I think there's some money that could be pulled back there, unless there's something that you guys would like to see happen at the house that we're thinking about. All right, with that, we'll move on to new business. We've got two items here, additional allocation for funding of gun violence prevention, and Francine Drive drainage and Kankakee United allocations. A lot of these all kind of go hand-in-hand, in particular, the Kankakee United allocations and additional funding for gun violence. So, I would like to see what your guys' thoughts are. So right now, in speaking with Chief Kidwell and Deputy Chief Austin, as I mentioned, all cameras right now, we have about eighty or so, but we would like to really get farther into the neighborhoods, if we could, with some of these camera systems. Really, we have a lot of our main corridors, intersections, different places, really covered really well right now. We do have some that are within the neighborhoods, I think there's a deeper dive that needs to be done. Ideally, you know, you could sit there and say, how far do you go? I mean, you could almost feel like there was a discussion there, you could almost go every corner, well, that's not realistic. But there's always gonna be something happen where there's not a camera at. But the goal was, if we got to, Chief, if we got another twenty-five cameras set up, we're thinking ballpark, get us over north of that hundred mark. You've been working with Wade to get some costs and everything, but basically, a two-camera setup, and we're going to utilize Senator Joyce's money with the LPRs at each one of these camera stations, also is about a six thousand dollar cost, so... Coming to you tonight, thinking a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is probably about the right number that we would need to complete that task. The question is, is do we allocate two hundred thousand dollars for three reasons? One, it provides a hundred and fifty to hit those spots that each of the wards needs, and we'd work with the aldermen and the alderwomen to talk about where they'd like to see these deep within their wards. When I say deep, kind of in more of the residential areas or other areas. Second piece is, as you see, we are about twenty-six thousand dollars over, what we projected. That would cover up, make up for that piece there. And the third part is, is to have a few nickels left over for things that come up every now and then, like that Gray Key software that showed up, it's been a very valuable tool for the police department. That was a new product that just, or not new product, but it was a new thing that we learned about through county that seemed to be very advantageous. So, the thought was, is would we want to allocate another two hundred thousand dollars towards that? It would be a hundred and fifty thousand, basically, for up to twenty-five, with a discount and some things, if we make that commitment, we could maybe get as many as thirty different Cover the twenty-six thousand dollar overflow or over-allocation, or overspent over the allocation, and still leave potentially about twenty-five thousand dollars for that unknown situation there. Chief Kidwell, anything you want to add to that, or missing, but?
If you can cover it, I think the lock there is true, particularly the LPRs, for the, we mentioned, we're trying to, we're trying to, what kind of, what kind of, I would say, renovation, that's, that would be, that's, actually, I assume, that we are truly, with our, our, so, as you're saying, so, rest, you're not, our, here, right now, that's, I actually, I'm, for the, we actually have a lot, but, I would say, probably, if I got, our, here, I think, a lot, that would be safe, and, so, there's...
So I guess my question was, is kind of, as was mentioned by Alderman Marzak before, trying to kind of keep, trying to stay close to that two million dollar number for the hydro plant, we're at one seven now, but you graciously all approved on Monday night the budget that included a line item for the Office of Violence Prevention and our general operating of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That'll be for the payment of two positions within the Office of Violence Prevention, outreach, marketing, allocations to help youth with different things. So, the question would be, is, as you see, when we set this up, we had initiated three hundred thousand dollars for Kankakee United, and that was to be over a three-year period, a hundred thousand dollars over a three-year period. To date, I think there's probably a little bit more that's been spent there, let me find it here, there it is, says we spent thirty-six, just a hair under thirty-seven thousand, I gotta believe there's probably a little bit more than that is spent, but that's leaving two sixty-three. What's the council's thought? Do we keep, just that, the question was brought up before, do we keep funding Kankakee United through ARPA allocations as we have approved? And then, really, we wouldn't wake up for probably another eighteen months, or twenty-four months, but probably realistically eighteen months, and then tap into the budget line item, but we already have it approved in the budget line item, and we feel that's a very easy fill and payment that we can make. Do we reallocate two hundred thousand from that three hundred thousand that we allocated towards the cameras and the software systems that we were talking about, Chief, there? That still would leave us basically sixty-three thousand dollars allocation in that line item there to cover any additional outstanding expenses? Do you think that's enough, Comptroller Kubal? I would think it would be, but...
I think that would be more than enough.
More than enough, and leave a little money for something that comes up? And really allocate the money there, that direction? What's your thoughts? It was, it's a thought, it's an idea, but I'm open to hear what you guys have to say, and how you would like to, one, I guess there's two questions here. One, do you want to fund additional cameras and software? I think we've seen, especially in the last six months here, they've been very valuable tool. And, you know, as I've always said, I don't know they stop violence, but they do help the officers. I think I'll defer to Chief Kidwell, and in particular to Deputy Chief Austin, because he was commander of the Bureau of Investigation, and I believe they do help with solving some violence crimes. If not, they'll tell you honestly their opinions. One, do we want to fund additional cameras? Two, how do we want to do it? Alderman Marzak?
With the Vercata cameras, they're a ten-year camera, correct? So, I'm a big believer in the cameras. I mean, if anybody hasn't had an opportunity to go look at the camera systems and what the capabilities are, I think you should do so. There was a scenario where an individual presented a item, and showed up at somebody's house, and it was right on camera, right in your face on the camera. You know, a vehicle was stolen in our ward, just, what was it, Thursday, I think it's Thursday. It was picked up by one camera, which means we have a lot of areas that aren't covered. We can't cover every, every area of the town, but we got one opportunity to do this right, and I think we're throwing nickels at it, where we should be throwing dollars at it. It's, you know, I get the hydro plant, I think we need to put that hydro plant together and use that money, you know, to self-fund, you know, itself too, but, you know, we got some money coming up over on Ricky Rocket's, and, you know, in the marijuana facility, but I, I think we gotta throw some real money, you know, at something that can do some good in these cameras. I think they're, they're what we need. I, I put up a camera system at Sally's house, and, you know, the officer, the officer said, excuse me, the officer told me there was a situation where there was people checking car doors, and so I checked the camera system. I can check by people or vehicles. Their system is way lighter beyond that, and here they are. There's a group of three, they checked all three cars out front, they're checking cars, they're not really breaking, in the cars that I know of, they're checking for open cars, and obviously, they found one that was open, and it was a Kia, and they're easy to steal. But if, if we have that, and we can't track them back to where they go, you know, I mean, we're missing it. So, I, I don't, I don't see where a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand is, is like enough. That's just my opinion. And if it's, if we're not gonna throw it at it now, I don't, I mean, they can only put up so many, you know, at a time, they can only put up so many at a time. So, I would say that we, we at least allocate, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand, and, and if we get money from the marijuana facility and the games, and it's over our six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in gaming, I think we throw it towards public safety. Otherwise, we're spinning our wheels.
Mayor?
I'm gonna go this way, Alderwoman, Low Marshall?
I just, I wanted to know, now, is the ShotSpotter, is that gonna be taken out of these funds for the next two years?
So that's a good question. We did talk, Chief Kidwell and I did talk today, we do want to renew it again. Again, I don't know it stops anything, but I'll tell you, it's a valuable piece for them, the casings very quickly, and those casings, now that we have a, we have a additional department that's within the Kankakee County here that can allocate those casings a little quicker and match them up to some things, so we did, I did tell Chief Kidwell we should pursue that again. I don't know if we determined how to pay for it. Last year, we took it out of ShotSpotter because it made sense to take it out of there. I think the year before, we probably took it out of the police budget, but Kidwell, we really haven't, we haven't talked where we pay for, but that we should renew it again, correct? Can you pull your mic up too, when you talk?
Yeah.
Oops, sorry, hang on, my phone.
I know last year, Chief Taskmaster, they convinced that we would do it again, and now that we're, plus the ATF, and they have the National Integrated Police System, which sort of, they're, their identification, they're shell-aced, they have actually, police that show them the state, the municipality, so, it does give us, and we do recover almost every shot, at least in the shot, if we create a definition, and we talked about, the system is locked, which is not, we talked to, they have it, they're not dressed with it, so we don't think we're gonna have, it was, with the vermatic areas and integration, I think we should be, so, it's, I kind of, you know, we did change the question, we were, we just needed to know that, we know these other, if we're, if we're, if we're, if we're, so...
Yes, that was, that was my point too. I think it's a good tool to have, because like in our area, when we did have shootings, it did just pinpoint it to that area, and I thought it was very helpful for them to be able to report quickly to the area where the shooting was, so...
They get there quickly, and when the officers do have to gather, you know, if they're in a vacant lot with high grass, they're at least within ten feet of probably where they need to look, so that helps, even if it's two in the morning and it's dark out, but it helps some. It's just, and again, as Chief Kidwell mentioned, we now have a full-time ATF person that's working within our colonies around here. That's a huge asset tool that we haven't had for years, that's, can integrate with it. So, I guess the answer is, would be the easiest thing, it'd be easiest to pay it out of ARPA funding, but one way or another, we thought it's a valuable tool that we gotta, we need to renew and keep one way or another. I just hadn't talked how we're gonna pay for it.
Yeah. Is that a hundred and fifty? Is that a hundred and fifty thousand?
It's fifty, it's fifty thousand annually.
Right. Three-year contract, right though?
No.
One year?
One year, yeah.
Okay.
Alderman, sing, you got a question?
Thank you Mayor.
Comment?
I witnessed the Vercata camera program in the back, and if you aldermen haven't seen that, you need to take the time to see that, see how valuable this is. On any given day, Chief, you can maybe correct me here, there's six or seven officers on the street in the city of Kankakee, day shift, afternoon and midnight shift. They can't be everywhere at the same time, it's just too much, they're too busy. These cameras have been invaluable so far. The demonstration I saw, Lance might have touched on it already, the guy went over to a lady's house with an AR-15 rifle, was gonna shoot her. They had it on camera, they got the license plate off the Vercata camera, the police officers were over at his house waiting when he went home, and he was taken in the custody. Luckily, nobody was injured or killed, but we got a gun, and we got a guy in custody that had obviously no, no sense of value of the laws in our community here. And that's just one example, there's been so many others. And I think anything we can do to advance this Vercata camera system, we need to look at, and we need to do it. I'm looking here, the Francine project, we have approximately two hundred thousand left, that project is done. You know, Elizabeth said that, you know, all the bills are paid on that, and there's two hundred thousand sitting there. So, and I, you know, I don't care where they get the money, but I think a hundred and fifty thousand for the new cameras is an absolute must. We need, we need to do this, keep our city safe.
Alderman Jones?
And I want to second that. Also, I would like to ask Chief in DC, how they feel? Do you think that's enough? Because this is what y'all do, y'all need to let us know what we should do, because this is what you do. We want to make sure, is that gonna be enough for you to do what you need to do, as relates to us maintaining, taking care of the city?
Well, Mr. Mayor, we thought a cluster, so one cluster's six grand, so there's two clusters, there's definitely twenty-five more clusters that we could get, so, so that pushes us into the neighborhood right now, because it's, I'm speaking of, there, like the exits and stuff like that, they're really, I mean, honestly, it might never be enough, you know, pushing into the neighborhood, so you can cover our streets, but I mean, it's a good start, I guess, and then, maybe, three hundred thousand dollars gives us twenty-five more clusters, and it gives us the old yard, the ability to, which we all have everywhere, we have an adult yard, we have a cluster, I mean, that's, that's another danger, we can, we can, we, uh, since, we can try and, uh, it's really a force multiple for us, so that's how we, so, yes, we have enough boys, take more, I mean, it's a start, you know, that's, uh...
Okay, and with the ShotSpotter, and like, certain things went off in her ward, and I'm assuming it tails with everything, is there a way that we know and we can keep up with, and it may give us a little understanding of where we might need to put cameras? Let's just say, on Francine Drive, we've had XYZ amount of shooting, you know, is that, is that recorded?
Is it recorded?
Yes, where ShotSpiders went on.
It's in, we didn't ShotSpotter, ShotSpotter's only one, it's only one square, we don't have ShotSpotter inside, so we can kind of try outside, the, but when they, when they have the structure, and they're concentrated on where the shots are fired, they did a good job, because they were targeted, so, as far as where we put the next cameras, I talked to Mayor about, but the thing, one of you is, hey, here with you guys, they all, and, and see, where you guys kind of, you guys just go up, and sort of map it, like, the future, I mean, you should, you like, fight hard, and stuff like that, so, I'm really just trying to cover our, you know, our traffic, first, like, that's, you know, outside, out, so, you might attract that, because, because you probably did, so, and that's the kind of stuff that we were initially trying to get, and, well, we hear, our, I understood some stuff, I saw, like, our, like, doesn't have, I don't know, I don't know, but, we, we capture, they come in, and they just put on their own partner, their own, they, kind of, roll bars, they capture, they come to their own partner, so, I mean, we're trying to cover all of our, our exits and exits. I assume, uh, now, we're starting to push it back into the, you know, the, the...
To be, to be frank, I mean, I, I kinda joked about it, but I, I think I was a little serious. I'd love to see us at 125 locations. I mean, that's another, that's another 50 more, 45, 50 more. But, um, but there's just some strategic spots that we've been hitting. You know, we talked about Hillcrest. There's only a couple ways in and out of Hillcrest, so we've set that up. Um, you know, but I don't think we need one in every block, but I really would like to dive deep into some of the neighborhoods, um, and try to get every three or four blocks within the neighborhood so that if something happens, we're gonna get something going one way or another. So, again, it's not gonna stop it, but we're gonna try and let people know that you can't get away with it very easy in Kankakee.
The most fortunate too, because our, uh, Kyle and Harry and Ray, I mean, it doesn't cost us, doesn't carry time. There's a lot of these, you know, these cameras there in the area. And then these guys, you know, they appreciate, uh, three, four, two, uh, three, different, they're, they're just, uh, starting to bother them. I, uh, those that have, uh, that's the kind of capability we have.
Alderman Johnson, did you have a question?
Yes. Um, how much is the grant from Senator Joyce?
So the grant funding is, he allocated us 200,000. Uh, they have the requirements, they have to be within the city of Kankakee. I just met with Chairman Wheeler on this last Friday. We have some paperwork we gotta get done. I gotta work on that this week. Uh, but that's 200,000 for license plate readers or license plate recognition, however you wanna call them. They have to be LPRs. So, uh, we figure that, um, I think Kidwell, Kidwell, you said you think we could give out 60 roughly for that?
Almost 30 million dollars a piece can be LPR of our guys. So, we can get a lot of that.
We can, I can make it more, but we figure we can almost attach them to every single. The nice thing about the ones that they've been demonstrating or doing what, they aren't always live like the flock that interact with all the cities, but they do cover more than just one lane. They've, they've tested them where they can get up to four or five lanes of traffic being covered. So.
And then I had another question.
Yes.
Um, it may not fall into this category, but I think last year, we paid for a system that unlikes cell phones through the county.
That's, that's the great key system that I was talking about. Yes.
Okay. So we're still funding that?
We are. We funded it again this year. I believe all the municipalities partnered in it this year, did they not?
Yes. Actually, we used, uh, it's called a task force. They, they were giving this money. I think that's, uh, they were out of making.
Yeah. So last year, the county got it. I think they took it on the, they, they paid about 42,000 of it last year. I think it's about a $50,000 annual expense. Um, we, we authored about $8,000 to pick up the rest of it to help them last year. This year, they went out to all the municipalities, at least the big ones. They went out to Mantino, Bradley, Bourbon A, Kankakee, and did a little bit of Prorada. And we did not take it through up for this year. As you mentioned, you use it through some, um, assets forfeiture funding?
That's called a task force.
Stolen, okay.
They, they, uh, they, uh, so, I don't know, you can stay with it. But it's still a, uh...
Okay. So we have it covered for at least this year?
We have it covered. Correct.
And, okay. And do we have a benefit from it?
Oh, yeah. We already have some side of the street. We have, uh, a lot of those that, uh, through the access.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. So are you suggesting that we consider taking most of the funds that were not yet used in the Kankakee United line and allocate that for this in light of the creation of the Office of Violence Prevention? Is that?
So, yeah. So my, I, I think the sense I had, it seems at least with the, the group that's here, there's, I don't wanna say all, but I wanna say there's a majority sense that they believe that this is further expend, expenditures for, this is a good thing. Um, I figured out that the question would be, how do we pay for it? I'm comfortable with it a number of different ways. Um, I came up with a solution of now that we have the Office of Violence Prevention in our general operating budget, that we could utilize some of the allocation from Kankakee United. We started there because we never had any funding for it. Or we can leave that alone for six months and we could just allocate for it like we do on everything. And we can review all these allocations in six months from now and sit there and say, we need to allocate these eight items where we've got a little bit of a surplus, whether it's $6,000 or it's $200,000 and say, okay, we've got about, I'm picking a number here, $550,000 that needs to be reallocated. We could do that in late year, early winter of January. We could do it that way. My goal tonight was, we're at, we've taken a pause on the cameras. Uh, we'd like to pick that back up again now that we've taken a pause. There's actually an incentive right now if we move quickly of, of discount rate. But, um, my goal tonight was to keep moving forward on that project while the weather's still good. They can put these up in the winter too, but it's just easier right now. So I'm comfortable however you wanna do it, but I always try to come prepared. How are we gonna pay for it?
Yeah. To me, personally, I think it makes sense to come out of that line since we've now, that was the start of that program. Now we've created a line item in the budget so that we'll cover it going forward. But in my mind, 225,000 of the 263, that will cover the deficit of, rough, most of the deficit of 26,000 and have 200,000 additional. That, what do people think about that?
Comptroller Kubal, are you comfortable with going that strong? I don't know. I mean, how much outstanding do you think of Kankakee United is there?
I don't know, to be perfectly honest.
That's why I kinda leave into 63,000 for right now. I, I like getting more money, but I don't wanna unallocate some money and then find out the comptroller Kubal's gotta come back and allocate money.
We will easily know that though in the next three to four months. I mean, so I feel like when you said everyone will join again and, and talk about reallocations again toward the end of the year, I feel like you could take more from there perhaps even than the 63 if we have a for sure. I just have to do a deeper review.
Yeah.
See where we're at.
So I mean, you could allocate money tonight knowing that we're gonna come back and reallocate at a different, at the next quarter. Alderman and Low Marshall?
Yes. I'm just trying to understand now, Kankakee United is defunct now? We're not used?
No, no, no. It's still very live.
Okay. That's what I was thinking.
Kankakee, no, Kankakee United's still very live. We just, we now are, so there's, there's two things with Kankakee United, but really it's that Office of, we're calling the Office of Violence Prevention. That's, that's Johnny and Kankakee United and the board and everything. So we've been using, we've now budgeted in our budget 150,000 on, hopefully on an annual basis going forward. Maybe even going forward, we might have more money allocated towards it. But the upcoming fiscal year's budget has 150,000 allocated for that department, which is, we are doing job interviews right now for a second person in that department. That'll not only do what Kankakee United is doing, it has a travel line item budget to work with Cities United. It has an outreach line item. It has a marketing line item. It has a story line item. All that stuff was there. So.
So instead of taking from, from something that we've already allocated, why can't we just allocate additional funds for the cameras so that if we do find a need for that area, we would still have our funding and wouldn't have to come back for that?
We, we can allocate money now and then come back and reallocate later if we want in six months. I'm okay with that too. Again, I don't ever try to come to you with, please allocate 250,000 because I figure somebody's gonna ask, well, how are we paying for this? And I, I'm sorry, I try to come up with creative solutions, but, um, I'm, no, Kankakee United is not, no, it's, it's, it's as strong as we want to be. We want it to be stronger. We want Kankakee United not only to be an annual basis, we want it to be something that's there for 20, 25 years from now. So.
Well, Mayor, I was, well, since we have the extra 219,000 from Francine Drive, that's just sitting there. So why can't that be allocated?
Absolutely.
It, it can. Um, I'm gonna look at, I'm looking at Alderwoman Johnson because that's probably enough next discussion. Um, we can, we can dive into that real quick. Um, there's a segment in the sixth ward that is a storm sewer fiasco, kind of like what was over on Francine Drive. Uh, there's a section over there, even when I was Alderman back in 2012, that there's no curbs, there's no storm drains. Uh, houses are getting flooded right now. When we get the heavy rains, it just rolls right off the street, right into the house, right into their basement. I know Alderwoman Johnson had asked about, could some engineering be done to figure out how to fix that problem over there? And her thought was is, I don't think it's gonna be 200,000 of engineering, but could we start engineering for that plan to fix that problem over there like Francine Drive? So I know that she was gonna bring that up. That's why I put it on here is Francine Drive drainage. I don't know what, I'd have to talk to Neo about what the overall cost of that is, but I think your plan was at least get some engineering started up on it to see if it's eligible for some type of funding somewhere.
Correct. So, and he hasn't given me a estimate yet, but he said it's expensive.
That it is expensive?
It is. Yeah.
It's probably several hundred thousand dollars to repair. So this is right on Eagle River Country Club. Is that the intersection?
Country Club, yeah. Behind the school is that Stuben School that's back there?
I thought it was closer up by the stop sign.
Mark Twain? Mark Twain, excuse me. Yes. Like off of Waldron down into the neighborhood. There's, is that Thomas Edison?
Edison, Edison. Yeah, Thomas Edison.
It's even farther away from there though. It's.
We are, we're halfway in your way.
Like by, um, I didn't know because I was looking at it. I drive over there. Country Club.
Country Club, Eagle.
I think Country Club and Eagle, that intersection.
Houston Park.
Yes. Like it over in there. Yeah. And it rains and it, I have, um, some residents that the water now seeps basement and crawl spaces. So we're hoping to get that corrected for them.
Basically, we're Eagle and River meet, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah.
There's no, there's just, it just, there's actually a little white house and there's a few others. The water, it's been that way for 10-plus years. That water just, if you get a heavy rain, I'm exaggerating, but you almost feel like you go fishing in their yard for a while.
No, I don't think she would disagree with that.
What's that?
I don't think she'd disagree with that. She pumps it, yeah. It's saturated.
Does, does a committee feel comfortable right now? Again, when we allocate, it doesn't mean we're spending, but we're allocating. Does a, does a committee feel comfortable allocating this money tonight and then coming back and reallocating some other things in the next two meetings? Or, or do you wanna reallocate it tonight? There are different ways. My goal tonight is to, to not slow down the progress. So, but we could come back and say, you know what? We've, we've, we're, here's where we add up the data on Kankakee United. It looks like, uh, there's 208,000 exactly left and we wanna reallocate that. We can come back. Francine Drive and goes, it looks like there's exactly 200,000 available there. I mean, we can do that anytime between now and, quite frankly, we've got about 14, we've got about 16 months. I don't wanna wait till this time next year, but we do have till December of 20. I imagine we'll have monthly meetings as we get to this time next year. I could see us having some monthly meetings as we get down to the home stretch of the four or five months of final allocation.
Circling, circling back to our, our hydro, we're gonna pull money out of here to get that project off, off the ground, right? Because where else are we gonna pull that kind of money? Are we gonna, are we gonna borrow, you know, that money? That's, that's where it circles back. If we let that thing sit.
We're not, we're not gonna let that sit. Trust me. It's a major, it's a major priority that I'd like to see it done.
Exactly. It's like money over the, I mean, it's, it's flowing. Okay? Hopefully it'll flow very fast. But once again, I think we're throwing nickels, you know, at, at this camera. I mean, we don't, if people don't feel safe in our town.
That's, that's my take on it.
We are spinning our wheels. And I mean.
The hydro's important, but public safety's more important.
It, you know, I think we got some funding coming, like I say, from, you know, Ricky Rock. Cause I, personally, you know, if they need more money after we allocate this, then we should be able to find it. But I, I'd like to make a motion. We, um, well, let me get, let me do one thing here. We have to have the spot shatter. Are we separating that out of these funds? Or is that gonna be a separate ask?
It'd be easier to put these in here. I wasn't coming to you asking for it tonight, but it'd be easier because we did, me and Chief Kidwell did say it needs to go forward. Along with Command, Deputy Chief Austin.
We need, we need 50,000 for the ShotSpotter. And I'd say 250,000 is, is light on the cameras. But I would say 300,000 would be, you know, something that would be money that I would sleep on, you know, and feel comfortable that we're doing something. So I would like to make a motion that we allocate 300,000, 50,000 to ShotSpotter, 250,000 towards the cameras. And, um, that's my motion.
Second motion. For coming from where? From the 1.7?
Yes.
Is?
You.
From the 1.7?
1.7, we still have.
Oh, not, not what we, not now.
We, we can reallocate the funds, you know? I mean, right now, you know, Francine.
Let me just make this official. So I, we have a motion on the floor from Alderman Marzak to allocate 300,000 to gun violence prevention. Another, basically like a second allotment like we did with, um, Keys program. We have a second from Alderman Naveras. Comments and discussions continue. Alderman Lewis?
Are we gonna take that from the 1.27? The balance that we have?
At this point, we would take it from the 1.727.
1.7.
Yes. And then we're going to take a deep dive into this at the next meeting of where some reallocation of money would go.
I don't, yeah.
Uh, Alderman Johnson, you had a question?
Well, I was gonna ask that because like Kankakee Works is sitting with 350,000 if I am looking at that. And I know that's been sitting there since October of 21.
I think as we look at this here, this is where I'd like to take some time before we do all of reallocation. I'd like to go, this needs to keep continuing going through committee meetings. Because some of this money, while it hasn't been spent, it has been allocated. Doesn't mean we're not spending it. It's just going through a process of getting there. Again, we haven't been on this hurry to, to spend everything right away. But, but there's, you know, Kankakee Works, I know there's a plan for that. There's some other things that this money is still being planned for. So, so I don't wanna be taking away from something that still has plans of being used.
Okay.
Again, remember, we have three years to use it. We don't wanna wait that long, but there are departments that are being worked on for that. So.
No, I'm in support.
So any other questions or comments? Okay. So the motion on the floor is to allocate 300,000 for a second round of gun violence prevention money from the ARPA funding and to make that recommendation to the full city council. Cause this is only a recommendation committee. You have a question, Omen Jones?
Do we have that 26,000 included that's gonna be dealt with, you know, the, I guess we have a definite 26,000 also, right?
Well, we will now have 800,000 allocated to gun violence prevention if this is approved.
Okay.
But that would, part of that would pay the debt.
Part of that would pay that overflow, that 26,000, correct?
Okay.
Because we'll have to, we'll have to book that one way or another. So. Okay. So we have a motion to recommend to the full city council, the allocation, a second round of funding in the amount of 300,000 for gun violence prevention. I'm gonna do a roll call. I'm gonna go backwards at this time. I'm gonna start with Alderman Jones.
Aye.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderman Naveras.
Aye.
Alderman Marzak.
Aye.
Alderman Osinga.
Aye.
Alderman Tully.
Aye.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Alderman Barron.
Aye.
Alderwoman Low Marshall.
Aye.
And we have 10 ayes, zero nays. We will move that on to city council on August 7th for approval. Um, I had on there Francine Drive drainage. Um, I know Alderwoman Johnson and Alderman Cobb's have asked for to at least start that process. It, it, I do, as I said, I do memorize all of it. It was a, we didn't have an answer for it. It is a very problematic area. Is the, um, would the, I, I don't know. I don't have a proposal from Piggish Engineering, but would the, would the committee whole be comfortable with allocating a few dollars? I'm assuming it would come from the Francine at some point, but for job, uh, for engineering of this project. Um, I'm gonna say at this point, I think it's a very safe number, I would think. I, I could be wrong, but 25,000 to allocate towards engineering boards app for storm sewer, um, repair over in the sixth ward?
Yes.
Oh, my, my motion, we, uh, allocate 25,000 for this storm repairs.
Obviously, that's not gonna repair it and fix it, but it's gonna get the process started.
Yes. Awesome.
So we have a motion from Alderwoman Johnson. We have a second from Alderwoman Low Marshall. Is there any questions or comments? Taking some notes, sorry.
Have we had any data back, uh, on the flow meters? Have we had enough rain?
Yeah. Actually, well, hang on. Let me come back to that one if you don't mind. Let's stand the motion. I'll answer that question for you. Okay. I'm gonna do roll call. Um, I'll start the opposite way. Alderwoman, Low Marshall?
Aye.
Alderman Barron.
Aye.
Alderman O'Brien.
Aye.
Alderman Tully.
Aye.
Alderman Osinga.
Aye.
Uh, Alderman Marzak.
Aye.
Alderman Naveras.
Aye.
Alderwoman Lewis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Aye.
Alderman Jones.
Aye.
Okay. We will allocate, we will recommend that to full city council on August 7th also. Alderman Marzak, back to your question. Yes. Actually, these heavy, heavy rains have helped tremendously from what I understand. Um, they actually extended their time period a little bit. We should've had the full reports by now, but because it was so dry, they actually extended it a little bit. They were still getting some good readings just from groundwater, even though it was very dry, not as accurate. But my understanding is with these heavy rains that we've had over the last two to three weeks, the, the data is very good and we should be getting that shortly. So where we would pursue next, uh, manhole or sewer lining project or at least identify where we need to look next. And that was something that, uh, I'll give comptroller Kubal, as she mentioned.